Welcome to the study session and regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education. Tonight is November 25th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. We're beginning the study session portion of the meeting. Trustee Noble, can you please take attendance?
We have a quorum, but we don't have trustee Kumar, Colan, or Southward here right now, but the Southward is coming later?
Yes. Yeah, all right. Moving on to agenda item number two, A, Board Committee Liaison and Representative Reports. And Superintendent West, I will ask you to lead in the order in which we call those and move through those.
Yes, filling in for Mr. Colan tonight. We did have a productive Finance and Operations Committee meeting on Thursday, November 14th, in which we had a couple of agenda items, the first being Pine Lake Park Agreement. The committee of the whole last month received a presentation by the West Bloomfield Parks and Rec recommending that we consider an extension to the original agreement with them. The committee did discuss it, and we are recommending that we entertain the extension agreement that was proposed by West Bloomfield and provided in the board packet for tonight's meeting. We looked at enrollment projections. Mrs. Moynihan provided enrollment projections. We are up 27 from our projection for this school year, so that's good news. We are, however, down as a district. We continue to see declining enrollment, which was expected, but we did outpace what we thought we were going to. And then we looked at, or we discussed some bond updates. The Wellness Center Drain Change Order is coming to the board for consideration tonight, which is a requirement by the city ordinances. Asbestos abatement overage, when they got into the project, there was a slight overage in the amount of abatement that was required, so a small modification to that is being recommended tonight. And then PMR is going to be here tonight to give a quarterly report. Condensed, I don't know how condensed it is, but we will hear from them tonight, as is stated in our agreement with them. So it was a good meeting, and those were the updates that were there.
All right. Which one would you like to call next?
Let's go to Strategic Planning.
Well, we had a productive but short meeting on November 12th. What month it is, I forgot, but we all got together virtually, and we discussed athletics and recreation program as presented in the information that we received, and we got a nice overview of it as provided by Keith McDonald, Deputy Superintendent, and Mike Cowdery, Director of Athletics and Recreation. We discussed the challenges and considerations regarding the transportation logistics. For instance, there was a field hockey game trying to play in Grand Rapids, and the cost, from my understanding, was $2,658 for two buses, which is really important to understand those considerations when looking athletics. But, you know, there's expensive sports, including field hockey, dance, esquarian, and football, but athletics is not a moneymaker. So we kind of went over, you know, what it looks like and got a better idea of what it costs, and it was very helpful, so thank you for that program presentation. We also discussed the strategic planning process and how we're in the process of hearing from Keith, who the facilitator for the strategic planning initiative is going to be, and the next meeting in December will be a proposal of who that person or that company might entail. And it's going to be a nine-month process, so it's something very important to pick the right collaborator to go forward, so that's what we discussed.
When we do that, is it going to go through like a similar process for, you know, like selecting the superintendent? Is there going to be, I mean, when we found a search firm, like, we went through a list of the search firms of who we wanted to select before we started that search. Are we going to do the same thing with this? We're going to have RFPs go out and kind of internally talk about how we would rank the vendors provided, or are you guys just going to recommend one? Like, what does that look like?
So just one quick, small correction. I'll be handling and facilitating that. And yes, we are looking at an RFP process. We'll likely go through an RFP process to review the companies that are out there. I think what we also discussed is we are not looking for a school improvement plan, rather a strategic plan, so finding a company that matches with our expectations is going to be important. So in December, which is just actually our meeting's next Tuesday, so we will not have an opportunity to have selected vendors. Our team's going to do some vetting and look at what the RFP would look like, and then try to issue that RFP in a timeline that's established by committee or by the board. It was important, as I had individual conversations with board members, that we're going to onboard the two new trustees in January, and then begin that process and see what it looks like from a collaborative community lens.
Okay. Any other questions or commentary on the Strategic Planning Committee update? All right. Curriculum and Instruction.
All right. Yeah, so we met on the 11th. Really, I'll wait for the major thing. We talked about the curriculum director posting, posted on the 12th of this month, so that is happening. I guess posting closes by the end of the year, so that's active. We talked about Bowers Academy. There is some text in that agenda to look at in terms of, like, here are all the considerations, but ultimately it came down to this is going to be put on hold for the time being, and, you know, kick that back up, because I think there's a lot more discussion to be had there rather than just what was in the paragraphs. It was also talking about the program in general, what that looks like versus just how we would service students outside of the district, which was kind of what started it, but I think there's more to that discussion. So that's on pause right now. The bulk of the presentation really was talking about the assessments, and I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder, not only because I won't, but because I can't, because I'm not as well-versed in all this, is how well they gave us the information, but LST gave a really good breakdown of everything, as they have in the past, but with a little bit more detail, I think, which was helpful in terms of looking at breakdowns and talking about not just where we stand, but what are the opportunities for improving some of those gaps? And I think that's what interests me the most, you know, less about how do we rank against Oakland County and how do we rank against this school, but how do these cohorts improve year over year? And I think that was at least my takeaway, is for me, that's always the most important thing. I'm not a big believer in looking at niche or any of these things and saying, aha, we're doing great. It's looking at these groups of kids as they go through the years and making sure they have what they need to achieve. So I know LSTU is putting the focus on that as well. So they have all the slides in there, they've shared that with you. The presentation they'll give tonight covers a lot of that, but if you want more information about all of the various assessments, that's all in there. And then any questions, obviously you can reach out. But yeah, that was the bulk of the presentation, was going through the details of what we'll cover tonight.
Will Mr. Bidlak be here at the regular meeting?
No.
Oh.
Miss Fairman and Miss Silaji.
I like use my name, but yes, I will take care of that.
Got it. Okay.
I don't know, you said it.
Fairman. All right. Any questions or discussion about the Curriculum Instruction Committee updates? No? All right, moving on to Section 2B, the first reading of the Board Policy Updates.
Yeah, so we received our, really, I think their semi-annual updates from Miller Johnson. We're putting the board packet for your review. I'm not sure what our standard operating procedure has been. However, they do have a series of policies for review and approval. It's our recommendation that we review these and that we accept them as written. There's nothing, as we reviewed them, there's nothing too earth-shattering here, so I would recommend, and standard operating procedures, is I believe you have an opportunity to review them by December 6th. We're asking for you to complete any questions, so we can get them to Mr. Sutton and Miller Johnson, and then we can get those back for the reading at the December 16th Board of Education meeting. So we can turn that around. However, I did have an opportunity, I think Mr. McDonald had an opportunity to review these as well. I don't see any concerns and believe they should be accepted as written.
Nothing of substance?
Nothing of substance.
Of the material? Okay.
No. The, I've always found in dealing with these, the key paragraphs are the italicized ones where Kevin outlines the rationale behind why they're being recommended.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep.
Just review those and get us any questions, and we can get answers back.
And you'll see the ARs in there.
Yes.
That's not one that you have or votes on, it's just there for your awareness. Then we need to have.
Yep.
Any questions or discussions regarding that?
Mr. Ray Brakes, do the blanks get filled in at any point, or they always remain blank?
Bang.
All right. We're not voting on those anyways.
Right.
Okay.
All right. No further commentary. Is there anything else that we need to spend this time going over?
Foundation doesn't meet this month. We will meet again next month. PTOC is going to meet next month, so.
It's quiet November.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I guess we're, we will reconvene at 7:30 for the regular meeting.
Calling to order the regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education. This was a two-part, this evening study session and regular meeting. We held our study session at 6:00 PM. It is now 7:30 PM and the beginning of our regular meeting. So this is, moving on to Agenda Item Three, which is reconvening. Trustee Noble, will you please take attendance?
Sure, everyone's in attendance beside trustee Kumar and trustee Colan.
Thank you. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a full house this evening. We have a lot of special recognitions that we get to celebrate this week, which is nice and fitting for the week of Thanksgiving, so this is exciting. Section Four of the Agenda, A, Celebrating Success, National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. This will be presented by Dr. Dan Hartley, our Bloomfield Hills High School principal, and Lynn Gibson, our IA principal.
Thank you, President Hill, Superintendent West, members of the board administration. It's so great to see so many people here to recognize the achievements of our students. I'm always very honored to do so, and appreciate Ms. Gibson up here joining me today. So Bloomfield Hills Schools has the honor of recognizing nine Grade 12 students from Bloomfield Hills High School and the International Academy who have received semifinalist status from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 16,000 students nationwide were named semifinalists in this year's 70th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program.
To qualify as semifinalists, over 1.3 million juniors in about 21,000 high schools entered the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2023 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. This serves as the initial screen for the program. To be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition, which include completing an application, having a consistently very high academic record, writing an essay, being endorsed and recommended by a school official, and taking the SAT or ACT and earning a score that confirms the PSAT performance. Keep in mind, they're doing this as they're also applying to all of their colleges, so it is quite the undertaking, and these students do such an amazing job. So at this time, could we have, could we start with having Abdul Ahmed come up? Max Chow.
And from Bloomfield Hills High School, Mark Asmar. Preston Cow. Sarah Gaines. Jinlu Zhang. And Aiden Sun. Pretty impressive. We're talking the top, what, top 10th of 1% of students in the country, so very impressive accomplishment for all of you. Are we going to, do I want to do this one and then do our commended students? Do this one first? Okay. Yep.
Why don't you guys switch to the middle since you're, we're here to celebrate?
All right, next we have our National Merit Scholarship Commended Students, so about 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Commended students placed among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2025 competition by taking the 2023 PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, NMSQT. So to start, from Bloomfield Hills High School, if you're here, come on up and line up in the front. Charles Baker. Owen Faust. Benjamin Guttler. Giselle Hadad. Nathia Kadakal. David Le Bond. Noah Millman. Shiva Modgill. Kyle Peterson. Grace Yang.
And from the International Academy, Story Huntley. And Aya Muscoon. Congratulations.
All right, your guys' turn. All right, next I can bring up Mike Cowdery, who gets to recognize our state champion tennis team.
Thank you for having us this evening. This time I'd like to congratulate the number-one-ranked Bloomfield Hills High School varsity tennis team. As I call your name, will you please come on up? Individual state champions, Pierce Shea for number-one singles. Connor Shea, number-two singles. Zev Spiegel, three singles.
Pierce and then Connor. Asher Langwell and Dominic Pascarella for one doubles. So Asher and Dominic are next. They're coming up right now. Dominic's first. Dominic's the tall one right here. We got everybody so far. Oh, sorry. Sejan Doshi and Meyer Saperstein for three doubles. No Meyer, Meyer's not here. Individual state runner-up, Brady Winston, four singles. Individual state semifinalist, Noah Kaplan and Krish Reddy, two doubles. Jude Bedradine and Davis Langwell, four doubles. Other team members, Charles Baker. Luca D'Angelo. Brody Oleschansky. Drew Richmond. And Clayton Yeomans. Did we miss one?
I know.
It's pretty cool. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I speak, I'm sorry, Jordan, I skipped you. Jordan Endelman. I apologize. Thank you. On Saturday, October 19th, the team won the MHSA Lower Peninsula Division One Finals for the third straight time. All 12 players advanced to the semifinals. Eight players went to the finals and seven won individual championships. The team finished the tournament with a significant victory, earning 35 of 40 points, while the next closest competing team received 27 points. The team is led by veteran head coach Greg Burks and assistant coach Nick Tolome. Congratulations to the team on becoming a three-peat state champion.
So are we keeping our positions for the next year? We didn't really get a chance to chat about it, but.
All right. I'm just waiting for the noise to clear out real quick. And then we have to go back to C and D. We went out of order.
Oh, uh-oh. What happened?
All right. We're going to reconvene the meeting. All right. So so far on our celebrating success, we've gotten through Agenda Items A, B, and E. We're going to go back to C, so that is also going to be presented by Dr. Dan Hartley, as well as Amy Merchant, our IB coordinator. This is to celebrate IB exam scores of six or higher.
All right. Thank you once again, again, Dan Hartley, principal at the high school. We had last year over 150 Bloomfield Hills High School students that sat for the international baccalaureate exams in May of 2024. The IB diploma program is widely recognized as one of the premier standards in university preparatory education globally.
I'm Amy Merchant, I'm the IB coordinator at the high school. The IB course candidates who pursue individual IB subjects without completing the full diploma program also benefit significantly from the program's rigorous curriculum. The IB course candidates enhance their academic readiness and prepare them for future success in higher education. BHHS is thrilled to acknowledge our students who demonstrated high achievement in IB exams, earning a six or higher during May 2024 exams. This designation of IB Laureates of Distinction is granted to the following students, who are current Grade 12.
The most popular student this evening, Charles Baker. Come on back up, Charlie. Next we have Celine Baydoun. Rhea Goldsmith.
Schwab Hassan. Sar Ibrahim.
Before our picture, we just want to also recognize that we had an additional, more than 50 students that either graduated this past year or are current 12th graders who scored a five or higher on these exams, and 15 students who graduated in 2024 with a full IB diploma. Way to go Blackhawks.
We're going to want to get much closer together, possibly.
The best audience I would ever have.
If we pause for just one second, if you want to stay up, I'll just take a singular picture. So all the rest of the students, congratulations.
Moving on to, oh, I'm sorry. That's what I'm, D, right?
Even though we already did the picture.
We're doing D, right?
Oh, yes.
Oh, that's what I was announcing, but you go ahead. We're a little out of sorts tonight. That's okay. Lots to celebrate.
All right. Over 150 Bloomfield Hills High
Over 150 Bloomfield Hills High School students sat for International Baccalaureate Exams in 2024. Bloomfield Hills is honored to share that Schwab Hassan, an anticipated full IB Diploma candidate in May 2025, tested in SL World Religions and earned the rare score of a seven. Shu joins the 5.7% of students globally who achieve this high score. Please join us and congratulations, Schwab Hassan.
Congratulations. Get our last photo with you. Congrats. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hartley, for all that you did. You were busy tonight for good reason and...
Getting our equipment back in order here. Thanks for everyone. Focus on that. Thanks to everyone who came tonight to celebrate all this great success. This was a... It's fun when there's good energy. All right. We'll give it a second to clear out. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item E. I'm sorry. I got to get back online here. Agenda Item Five, we are moving on to our superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. Quite a bit... Some more celebrations and some additional information for you. A little bit longer than what we're used to, but nevertheless, some celebrations. We saw over 50 families come through our open house in early November to tour BHHS. If you're considering BHHS for high school, please go to our website to sign up for a tour. Bloomfield Hills High School had 18 pieces of artwork accepted to the Tri-County High School Art Exhibition, and BHHS art teacher and visual arts department chair Matthew Beauchamp won the Teacher Award. They will be attending the January Board Meeting to be recognized. We were following this. BHS alumni Merrick Churna... Churna, I believe? Class of 2024 has broken a world record and made history as the youngest person to ever compete in the grueling Great World Race. The Great World Race entails seven marathon runs in seven days on seven continents. So he completed that late last week. Just an incredible thing. We were following it through Paul's social media, and it was just... What an incredible feat. And congratulations to him on that amazing accomplishment. Our Fall Musical took place this past weekend, and I had the privilege to attend with my family. What an incredible performance. Our students are just absolutely amazing and talented, and I certainly look forward to seeing future performances. BHHS girls swim and dive capped off their season at the MHSAA State Finals, coming in 10th place. The BHHS varsity volleyball team completed the fall season by advancing to the district playoffs, where they ended up losing to Orchard Lake St. Mary's, but had a great season nevertheless. We're proud of all of our student athletes and our performers, our artists, and our actors and actors. So we're doing great things. I think that just showcases and highlights all the amazing programs that we have and the accomplishments of all of our students. Dare to Care, that is a challenge that I introduced at the beginning of the school year. We continue to live into that. We've started the Dare to Care Bank that I'm introducing to the staff and PTOs. We're recognizing staff across our district for their efforts in connecting, acknowledging, respecting, and engaging with our BHS school community. Essentially, it's a depository where we're attempting to get at least 1,000 entries for the school year. As I've told you through the process and through my first few months, I believe we have to tell our stories, or people will tell stories about us. And this is just a way in which we can capture those stories and continue to highlight the amazing things and the connections that are being made throughout our school district. I've had the opportunity to meet with several staff at several staff meetings and PTO meetings, where I'm giving a fall update that just gives the highlights of some of the things going on in the school district. I look forward to engaging with these groups throughout the next couple of months. Rebecca has been so gracious to schedule these, and again, it's my way to connect and give updates in an authentic, genuine manner to our PTO groups, as well as our staff. So everybody's getting a consistent message. It will be my goal to do this in the fall and in the spring of each year, and tailor those messages to important highlights going on in the district in the spirit of transparency and keeping everybody up to date. Bond update. Most notable this month is that the Fox Hills location is scheduled to be demolished beginning in the coming weeks. It will take several weeks to complete. Following the demolition, the Fox Hills location will continue to have a parking lot and allow for considerable green space. We are proud that our senior gold card has... We've had over 60 seniors within our community sign up for the senior gold card within the past several weeks. We encourage all of our senior residents to sign up for our senior gold card so that you can get into the district events for free. This is a program in order to connect with those that don't have students, a very important part of our population, and we want to make sure that we're continuing to make good, genuine connections with them. Kindergarten Info Night is coming up. Mark your calendars. It's taking place on January 29th at BHHS at 7:00 p.m. This event is geared toward adults. We're excited to begin talking about kindergarten for next school year with our families. Upcoming engagement events that I will be attending. Music and Mingle, Friday, December 20th, 10:00 a.m., Senior Center. Snow and Tell, warm drinks and seasonal treats, Wednesday, January 22nd, 12:00 p.m., right here at the Booth Center. And then Coffee and Chat, February 13th at 10:00 a.m. at Kona Elementary. Again, these are community engagement opportunities that I'll be attending. We had one just last week, Soup with the Superintendent. I do not name these, but I appreciate them nevertheless. And they are... They have been proven to be meaningful, albeit we had two members of the community come to the last one. They were productive conversations that led to some action that needed to take place, and I welcome the community at all of those events. Our Distinguished Service Award deadline is December 8th. Please nominate a district staff member, community member, parent, board member, and/or alumni for this extraordinary... For their extraordinary contributions and service by December 8th. An invitation to all of you, the OCSBA's biennial First-Time Trustee Orientation Dinner Meeting is taking place on Wednesday, December 18th at 6:00 p.m. at Oakland Schools. I encourage I will be attending. I believe our new trustees will also be attending, and you are all invited as well. It's a great event to connect and learn more about the Oakland County School Boards Association, participate in professional development opportunities, and learn advocacy efforts on behalf of public education. And then this marks the Thanksgiving season. It provides me an opportunity... This week always provides me a personal opportunity to reflect on the things in my life of which I have great gratitude. At the top of that list is certainly serving as your superintendent. It's been just an amazing four and a half months, as I've mentioned, almost five now, and it is just an honor to be here, and I wish all of you a very healthy and happy break. So that concludes my remarks.
Awesome. Thank you, Superintendent West. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Board President's Report. Mine is rather brief today. I want to start by acknowledging that we got through our board election this past month. I want to thank everyone in the community who ran for consideration of a board seat. Next month, we will be honoring trustee Van Gemert and trustee Kumar at that meeting, which will be our last meeting with them, and we will give them the appropriate thanks and acknowledgement at that time. That's all going really quickly here. Onboarding for our two new trustees who have been elected, Lindsay Baker and Jason Abel has already begun. Martin Brook will be administering their acceptance and oath of office in the coming days. And as Superintendent West just mentioned, he will be accompanying the new board member elects and any current seated trustees interested in attending the Oakland County School Board Association Biennial New Board Member Orientation on December 18th at Oakland Schools. Our mid-year evaluation, effective this year, I've mentioned this in previous meetings, there were changes to the superintendent evaluation model. One of the changes requires a mid-year evaluation. Last month, we had a closed session to review superintendent's informal report, and we'll be meeting again on December 16th in a closed session to conduct that mid-year evaluation, which is called for in the new rules. To echo Superintendent West, I want to wish a happy Thanksgiving week to everyone. Safe travels to those who travel around. Everyone in the community wishing you well, but I'm especially wishing well to our teachers and our staff who are hands-on with our learners in our community every day. It's an extremely hard and taxing job, and I hope that you all enjoy this downtime and some respite to relax with your friends and family, and it's much-needed R and R, especially heading into what seems like an even crazier time of year, December. So well wishes to you all, and thank you for all... We're very thankful for each of you and what you do for our community. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Board Intern and Student Advisory Committee Report. This will be presented by Adeline Sherman and Aya Maskun, our board interns. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. For those who don't know, I am the first board intern. I'm a senior of the IA, and my name is Aya Maskun.
And I'm Addie Sherman, and I'm a junior at Bloomfield Hills High School.
And we're just going to be giving an update on what the board interns have been doing so far, along with our Youth Action Council. For those who don't know, essentially, the intern's role is to acknowledge something at students that we see is not necessarily a fault, but something that needs improvement within our district and create a program to better that. And this year, we've decided to strengthen the bonds we have across our age groups and across campuses within Bloomfield Hills District. So the first thing we've done this month is identify what departments we can work with to do this. So we have selected girls' sports, boys' sports, forensics, which is a very large and established club we have within different age groups, theater, and then music, which encompasses choir, band, and orchestra. We've assigned our different council members based on their involvement. We've assigned them to different departments that they already have connections with, and I know some board members were asking, like, what are we involved in? So we wanted to give a little overview of, as the board members and as council members, what we're involved in. So we're very lucky that we have a very diverse and involved group. So we have a lot of student athletes. We have members on our boys' lacrosse, boys' hockey, and then boys' wrestling, along with girls' swimmers, who obviously just won at states, which is really cool. And we have girls' basketball. And then we also have a lot of academic pursuits, which is really cool. So we have, like we mentioned, forensics. We have Model UN. We have mock trial, DECA, which is business-focused, Science Olympiad, and then even more. We also have members who participate in our theater and who are part of our orchestra and other musical groups. So I know somebody was asking, so I just wanted to, you know, see that we are very involved, and luckily, that's making it even easier to reach out. So that's currently what we're doing. We're reaching out to department heads. Mr. Paul and Mr. West and other people, other board members, have been giving us contact information, which has helped, you know, make the process even easier. Excuse me. So we're currently doing that. We are also currently working with Bowers because we realized that we don't have anybody that we can talk to at Bowers. So we reached out to the principal. They're currently in a transition period from a principal to another. So we've decided with them that we're going to be meeting later on this month, which, you know, will hopefully allow us to find point of pride from Bowers and also include them in our process and include them in our departments as well. We also had another idea we wanted to run by the board, which was essentially at the end of the year around Move-Up Day, which is April/May. We wanted to have our high school students host a club fair for our eighth-grade students. This essentially will be the high school students, not necessarily all the clubs, because that would be a lot, but we'd focus on some clubs, and we did, you know, have a poster, have some sort of presentation, and take it over to our eighth-grade classes, where there would almost be a gallery walk, and that will just allow our eighth graders to, one, see what's coming up for them in the next four years, which obviously can be very daunting, moving from middle school to high school. So we thought this would help erase some of that anxiety. And then we were reflecting personally that this also would have helped us. So I realized that there's always a lot of talk about joining clubs at the start of, you know, ninth grade, like, oh, you have to join this club, you have to join this many, it's going to be important for colleges. It can be very overwhelming, and a lot of the times, what we see is people essentially just joining all the Google classrooms, and then, one, that's really overwhelming for them, and they can't keep up with that. And, two, that kind of makes it difficult for our clubs. And as club board members, we've realized that, you know, it's kind of an issue when halfway through the year, people are dropping out, because that makes it difficult, especially for our competition teams. So we thought a club fair would really help reduce these problems. And then Addie was also pointing out that she was also very overwhelmed, because, you know, it's hard to see... It's hard to know what you're interested in when you're a freshman, and all of a sudden, all these clubs are telling you, join us, join us, we'll help you do this, or we'll help you do that. So if we have presentations at the eighth grade, it will kind of help streamline that, and it'll help you navigate the clubs in a much, you know, less anxiety-inducing way. So that was just another idea we had. If anybody has any questions or concerns, please let us know. You can reach out to me, or you can reach out to Addie. And if there's no questions, I'm going to turn it over to her for point of pride.
Okay, great. So the points of pride are basically some things that may, or we want to highlight that are going on in the district that are positive, that may have gone unrecognized. So to start, Sweets for Smiles is a certified nonprofit started by IA senior Valencia Chen, who dedicated to promoting the importance of oral health and medical security. And she actually creates these, like, medical care packages and then delivers them to areas in need. Another is Little Aces Tennis, founded by two IA students, one who actually plays on the boys' tennis team at Bloomfield Hills High School. They teach tennis to students across Oakland County, and so far, there have been over 120. And they've actually raised $3,000 for Variety Children's Charity of Detroit, which provides services and support to children with special needs across the community. And lastly, a new BHHS school store is opened called The Perch, and junior Austin Toma won the logo contest and created this outstanding logo for The Perch. The new store is open during all lunches. It's very cool. There are always a ton of fantastic initiatives going on in the Bloomfield Hills District.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both, and have a nice spring.
Anything else? Any questions for our board interns?
Questions?
This was a great presentation. It's not easy to come speak at a live-stream meeting. A lot of adults have trouble sometimes. You can tell that they're nervous or don't know what to say, and you both did wonderfully. Maybe you didn't know it was live-streamed. Maybe that's a good thing.
Surprise.
No, you did a wonderful job, so thank you for giving us that update. Thanks.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving week. Awesome. All right. Now we are moving on to public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? We do not. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Consent Agenda. Trustee Fala.
Got to make the correction. I think it should be trustee Noble.
Yeah, I didn't know why it said that, but I went with it. It was a copy and paste from the last meeting when she wasn't here.
I defer to trustee Noble.
Well, thank you, trustee Fala. Well, I moved the Board of Education to approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as presented, including B, C, D, and E.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, General Discussion. Section A, Spring 2024 Assessment Data Presentation. This will be presented by Sarah Fairman and Kristin Salagi from our Learning Services team.
I think I'm okay. Yeah, you don't... Looks like it's going to fall or something like that.
The key's going to come out and string me. I'm sorry.
You okay with it?
I'm good. I thought you wanted it.
Oh, no, it's okay. I have it on my screen here.
Perfect.
So we're following along. Don't worry.
No worries. No worries. So Kristin and I are going to present the data for the Learning Services Team from the Spring 2024 testing cycle. And Kristin will begin talking about the different tests that we have, and then we'll go into our results, and then what we do with our results and our plans for moving forward.
So this slide just kind of gives an overview of the assessments that we administer. There's the M-step, and each one actually measures something a little different. The M-step measures the attainment... Student attainment of state standards. So that assessment focuses on state standards, and it's what they call computer adaptive, meaning that when a student answers one question, it then chooses the next question for the student. It will never drop below grade level, but it will be the easier end of grade level versus more challenging, if that's how the students are doing, or it'll be more challenging, but always in that grade level band. And they take that in... For English and ELA, in three, four, five, six, and seven, and then they take math, same grades, and then science and social studies is grades five, eight, and 11. And then we give... And then we give the PSAT 8. We also give nine and 10, but they're not accountable tests, so we don't get the same results back in the same fashion. But that is given in ELA and math as well, and that's called a multi-stage adaptive test. So, people will still say it's computer adaptive, and it is. But instead of choosing the next question based on the response to one question, they take a whole half of the assessment, and then the result of that half chooses the next half of the assessment. So, it's a little bit different. It's not as adaptive. And that measures if students are on track to be ready for college. And then the SAT is the same sort of assessment this year, the multi-stage adaptive test that's given in 11th grade, and that measures if students are ready for their readiness for college. State assessments are given for a lot of different reasons. They identify the supports that individual students, school, or districts may need. They also identify successes that are happening out there, so others can learn from them. They help us to make changes and inform educational programs at the district and school levels. They measure progress of schools and districts, and it's just one piece of the assessment puzzle, or what we call the assessment system. So, speaking of assessment system, a balanced assessment system includes multiple types of assessment that are given for and of learning. Some of the types are formative assessment, interim or benchmark assessments, and summative assessments. And those formative assessments are your classroom-type assessments that inform instruction on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. And then your interim and benchmark assessments are given at the district or school levels, like, everyone takes them to inform, sometimes it informs instruction delivered by teachers, and others, other times, it helps us inform our programs and what changes need to be made and to progress monitor how we're implementing curriculum. And then the summative assessment is also given at the classroom level for, like, a chapter or unit test, but also, that's what the state assessments are. They're considered summative assessments or year-end assessments given annually. So, before we jump into our data, things that we have worked on and continue to work on over time are the funding, time, and resource support in the following areas, specifically in our alignment of K5 and 6A curriculum. That's been a big push for the last five years, including both assessments, resources, and the curriculum, as well as instructional practices. We're starting, we are seeing continued positive trends in those areas. We have also started working, not started working, but be always embed our professional learning targeting into those same areas as well. So, we're looking for coherence, vertical, and horizontal alignment, as we have gone through the bond and re, you know, changed our schools around. Our new elementary schools are back to K5s. Our middle schools are two middle schools instead of three. We have worked really hard to make sure that what is happening on one campus is happening at all of them. A great way to say that is our middle schools run as one mega middle school that just has two campuses. So, curriculum decisions are made across the district in those areas, so that our students are having common experiences and curriculum as they go through. We continue to spot opportunities to align our extended-day services. So, in fact, right now, we are looking at ways to provide additional supports to our students who are not quite meeting our grade level and/or could use some extra support in some of the high school, college, pre-college courses. And then we are continuing to always find ways to develop science, social studies, and STEM, as we're looking at what the future holds for our students as they move out into the professional world, making sure that they have those experiences for them. And then always adding additional supports in Tier 2 and Tier 3 in supporting students to grow. So, those are what we have focused on up until this point, and then the data, as it comes out, is what Kristin will present. Oops, sorry. There was one more page. For secondary students, we have talked, we talked earlier today about this, about getting students into Algebra 1 and being successful in Algebra 1 in eighth grade. So, we have 50% of our ninth graders currently took Algebra 1 in eighth grade, so they are able to get to those higher math courses that also translates also into their science courses and their ability to take care of, you know, take physics, chemistry at younger ages. We've changed our middle school schedule around, so we have increased time in those core academic areas. We have continued to work and push to have our students have access to AP and IB tests and those courses. And then the last two are really about how we are starting to see where we brought in Envision Math and then Big Ideas Math that is coming through. Now, our ninth and 10th graders have had a longer time with those programs as we move forward, so we're seeing increased results for that, because it's becoming a more coherent curriculum. There we go. So, the next two slides are going to share the M-steps results for Grade 3/7. This one's ELA, and the next one will be math. And this is just how Bloomfield Hills performed within Oakland County, and you can see that we are at the top end with our county neighbors. And math? Yeah. And then same thing with math. We're at the top end of the county. The next two slides are the PSAT 8, and although we call it ELA, it's actually called EBRW, or Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, just in case. We kind of use the terms interchangeably, but that's what a college board uses. And you can see that Bloomfield Hills was the top in the county for the eighth grade for the ELA, and also top in the county for the math. The next two are the same slides again, but these are for the 11th grade SAT. So, you can see that although it looks like we're a little bit farther over, those, like, four or five there are so very close, there's not much of a difference, but we are still at the left side of the graph. And same thing here for the math, and you can see the scores, even the percentages across the county are very different from ELA to math. So, My Access is the M-step for our significantly cognitively impaired students. There are three levels of that assessment. There's My Access participation for the most severely cognitively impaired, then there's supported independence and functional independence. And these are the students that have an adjusted curriculum and are meeting adapted state standards. They're not always, their goal is not always all of the state standards. So, this is just an overview of what My Access is. And this is not any performance. This is just the number of students that participated in each level, and the state of Michigan has a goal of 1% or less of all students with an IEP taking one of these assessments. So, you can see that Bloomfield Hills is working to decrease the number of students that are taking this assessment. So, we are on the right track or moving in the right direction. So, with MYKIP, which is the Continuous Improvement, we are always using our data to help us make sure that we are meeting our goals within MYKIP. So, our goals continue to be systems of support through the Multiple-Tierred Systems of Support, or MTSS, formative assessment for Michigan educators, which is, as we looked at that balanced literacy thing, or not balanced literacy, balanced curriculum and balanced assessment, is the idea of making sure that we are catching our students in that formative stage throughout our curriculum, so that we're not waiting till a summative assessment to find out if a student has understood the data, but really catching, or information, catching it sooner in the system. We are also using social-emotional learning, restorative practices, and restorative justice, so students feel comfortable and safe in our buildings. If you feel safe, then you're able to learn. Working towards building deep thinking and engagement, learning through STEAM, and centered maker learning with our new STEAM classes in elementary, trying to embed that beyond that into the classrooms themselves, as well as our middle school and our high school programs. And then professional learning communities with targeted instructional time based on the data. So, we have worked with PLCs at the high school, middle school, and elementary levels in terms of going on learning walks, understanding what your colleagues are doing, understanding how to use all of our new curriculums, what are strong instructional practices, and seeing it in action. So, that is like a job-embedded learning that we are also doing within our district. So, future focus in elementary. We are continuing to do K2 and 3, 5 literacy programming. That includes the word studies, interventions, and small-group resources. For K8 mathematics, it's the implementation of the Bridges mathematics, K through 5, as well as the idea of doing extension support and project-based experiences. That is embedded also within the Bridges experience in the new curriculum, so that will coming through, but also with I Ready, finding ways that we can support the students if they have a gap in their learning or their understanding, where it's targeted for them. We have targeted coaching in mathematics and literacy, both by, within our buildings with our elementary program specialists, as well as our teacher leaders in those content areas. And then we are working on STEAM and Ingenuity experiences that create those experiential learning for students in both K8. For middle school, we've done a lot of work in our programming. This is the second year of a new schedule. Last year, we had 90 minutes of math and ELA, or 88 minutes. This year, with feedback from teachers and students, we went to 65 minutes in all four core curriculum areas. With that, there are some increased expectations in science and social studies in terms of research-based experiential learning, full lab experiences, so that they have more time. That was always, as a science teacher, the hardest part is doing a lab and not having time. We've given time, so those things can all happen. We are also working with our math. Those Envision students are coming through. Now, there is a nice vertical alignment of the mathematics as they go through. We have five levels of mathematics that is offered at the middle school from a MASTS all the way through AP, pre-AP geometry with statistics. So, that goes from 6th grade through 10th grade mathematics is available within our buildings. We do have a few students who are even advanced beyond that, who attend the high school for mathematics and science. They got this year, four. And then with those longer periods of 65 minutes, we are working really hard with that social-emotional piece within the classroom. They also have an integrated studies course as part of each day that helps them to also foster relationships with their teachers, with their colleagues, and with fellow students. And then professional learning continues in both of those areas. For high school, we have embedded more student support within the academic schedule. For junior year, last year, we talked about junior and senior year. We talked about that integrated studies course, where we were hoping that we'd have a couple students engage in that. We have 150. So, obviously, it was a class that they really wanted, where it allows them to get additional support, specifically in math and ELA, but in other content areas as well. We are reviewing and incorporating equity grading practices that make students feel safe, comfortable, seen, and heard. We are advanced coursework, including AP and IB. We're continuing to investigate additional courses in those advanced areas, as well as additional CTE offerings for our students. That includes those new career-focused courses in curriculum to help students identify classes we already have in an area of interest that they have. So, one of the things we've looked at, which is somewhat simple, but in our coursebook, we list courses by discipline, instead of listing them by, hey, you want to be an architect? Here are some courses you might want to take. Here are some clubs you might want to join, to help even foster that idea of professional studies without changing a massive curriculum. We have all those classes there. It's just we're not presenting it in the right way, so finding better ways to market opportunities to our students. And then we are working with those social-emotional foundations. You've seen the articles about the nests at Bloomfield Hills High School, the birdhouses and the nests. So, again, another way to incorporate those connections across the building. And then we do PLCs at that level, as well as active learning for adults in our students. So, we included additional assessment information. I believe it's 31 slides? Yes. And data for you, but they're not actually part of our live presentation tonight. They're just there and available for your review. So, that's where we're going to stop for now, but we'll take questions.
Who would like to go first? John, go ahead.
I'm not sure what slide it is, but the heading is, "How Many Bloomfield Students Participate in Any Level of My Access?"
My Access.
Yeah. I'm just confused by the data a little bit. It says, "Goal is 1% or less of students with IEPs."
Correct.
But then, the chart shows number of students, or is that percentage of students?
No, so it's the number of students that have taken it, to show that we are working towards decreasing the number of students to meet our 1%. We were, last year, above the 1% that we were expected to have, so we're working to decrease the number of students. So, this is just showing that we are making the step, taking the steps necessary to make sure kids are taking the assessment that is best for them.
Can you describe what that means? Goal is 1% or less of students with IEPs? We want, do we want the students taking the test that they're supposed to take?
So, the state and the district would prefer that the most, that as many students as possible are accessing the more rigorous state standards versus the alternative standards. So, that's what we're moving towards, getting more, putting more supports in place and giving students the opportunity to access that learning, and then take the assessment that matches that learning.
Okay. But even with the state requirements, we're still trying to give the students the test that's appropriate for them?
We are. Like, this year, we're still going to have to create, to submit a waiver, because we're over the 1%. But that's because, when we were writing IEPs and deciding on the assessments, we made the decision that was best for students. But we're also trying to put supports in place to increase students' access to it as well. So, it still would be the right test if we're able to provide the correct supports.
So, when we show, say, it says 40 from 20, or 40-ish from 2023, is that 40 students, like, as a percent, and then as a percentage of elementary students? Because there's, what, over 5,000 students in the district? I would think we would be...
Forty, so there's 40 students with, of the students that have IEPs, 40 of them took the participation level of My Access. So, what...
Percentage, I guess I'm just confused by this.
So, we're still above the 1%. So, it should be below that.
So, the question is, how many IEPs are there in the district?
Is that what we're saying? So, everyone that, so, it's 1% of students with IEPs?
Yes.
So, 40, 40 would be like 4,000. Oh, gotcha.
Sounds like a math equation.
Well, I'm just thinking like...
If Laura was here, she could...
If Laura was here, she could... I'll have my head, I'm not going to say that.
So, if there's 400 with IEPs, you only, you're at four. I'm just trying to figure out how far over are we, you know? Right. Because you have one that says, you know, we have this percentage, and then the chart shows a number, so it's confusing as to, are we close or not? You know? I have no idea.
No, I don't, I don't know. Laura would know the answer to that better, but we were just trying to show that we have decreased the number of students.
Is there any penalty for not achieving the state's goal of this 1%?
At this point, I'm not aware of a penalty, but there is a rigorous process to prove that you've made the right decision, and I think it's more like, over time, they've given you time to get there versus it has to happen tomorrow.
I just think, like, if there was like a funding, like, mechanism.
There is, but the idea behind it is that you want students taking the state standard as it stands, because that continues you along a graduation path that allows you to do more successful post-secondary. So, instead of saying, hey, our data is great, because we have so many kids doing well, but we've put all these kids over here, the state's kind of putting a guardrail and saying, no, 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 this is only for those students that really need it. And so, I think it's more, it's less about us and more about putting in a guardrail across the state, saying, we're not going to just put students somewhere. We're going to actually build in the support so they can be successful on a regular graduation track.
I guess I would be interested in how close we are to that 1% goal, because the data, this doesn't really tell.
I'm writing the questions down to confer with Laura.
I wouldn't want to hazard a guess out loud, but we can get that information to you for sure.
Trustee Fala.
Well, on top, is this a new, when did this start? Was it 2023 with this 1% goal, or was it prior to that?
I want to say it was prior to that, but there was, you were given time
Yeah.
to address it. So, now, they're kind of zeroing in more on it, saying, okay, it's coming, so we worked on that. But I think that we have students with IEPs who have gone through where we can't just automatically go and take it out.
Sure.
Yep.
I guess, like...
Just our wing, like, students are in here, not the rest of them.
Yeah. I mean, fundamentally, I just wonder why 1%. I mean, I know that's...
I think it's just a guardrail for the state. I mean, I think that there have been issues, and I'm going to say historically across the board, about not providing the support for students to be successful. And so, this is kind of a guardrail to say, you know, really pushing it back on the state, on the district to provide the support.
Yeah, I get it. I think it's something, I don't remember, I don't know if we saw this before. I don't remember seeing it before, but it was just something, I guess, going forward. It's good to track.
Yeah, it's something we talked about at Learning Services, that because we're held accountable to this 1%, we should share that information.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's a good goal. I understand the reasoning behind it, but it's then, when we see the number, it's like, all right, what does that mean for us? How well are we doing? Are we performing well? Do we have worked, like, so, yeah, I think to John's point, just knowing for the future, because I don't remember seeing this come up. It is a good thing for us to look at, I think.
It makes you reflect on your practice for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, quick on the other items, some of this is just commentary, like iReady, I think is going to be a critical resource for us in achieving some of these goals where we want to identify areas where we have gaps or weaknesses. Um, to me, it's probably the number one tool, and I just want to make sure that as we continue to move forward from a budgetary perspective, whatever we need, that we've got adequate funding, time, resources for all the teachers that are involved in this, because I really think as I've come to see it and be exposed to it, um, to me, it's, it's probably the best way for an instructor to have the ability to get, get the missing pieces of the puzzle to every kid. And every kid's going to have different pieces that they're missing. And especially like as we talked in the elementary setting, that's hard in a classroom to be able to find out which student is where. What do they need to get to where they need to be to? And by the way, you've got these students that are already past that, how do I help them continue to grow? I think this is the way we do it. So I just want to make sure we're highlighting that program as it becomes and comes into fruition, that we have all the resources we need. And you and I, another thing we talked about, AI.
Yeah.
In terms of opportunities, I, I know it's kind of a, sort of on the same track as iReady, but I do see this as another way for us, and I know maybe this is like a David Shulkin thing, but us to put it on the forefront, not just holistically, like what are we doing with AI to be, you know, on the same level of what others are doing. But this is a way, I think, for us to look in a direction of saying, how can you use a tool to help us provide more instantaneous learning opportunities for those students? Give them the power to shore up any gaps or weaknesses because teachers can't do it quickly. AI is a way to do that. Um, so I think for David and his team as they're going into that, that's probably a, a really narrow focus for us to look at. Instead of saying AI is like a whole playing field, which everybody does, like what are we doing with AI? We could narrow in and say, what are we doing with AI to help us improve in these specific areas where we need that assistance? So just something for him maybe to take on as we kind of explore platforms, which I know he's doing. That's it, so I, and thank you. I know that's a lot of data. I, in our committee, uh, meeting, I appreciated all the in-depth discussions. I know we got down deeper and I know that, um, we talked about the need to focus on, you know, the cohorts and improvements in those areas as opposed to just looking holistically at ratings and rankings. I think you guys are laser focused on that, so I appreciate, um, making sure that we're getting the most out of what we're putting into these activities.
And that's why we talked, like, talking about the story, because when you look, we, we had the conversation earlier this evening about, um, sometimes it's a cohort that goes through, sometimes, but we don't, just because a fourth grade cohort didn't score as well, it doesn't mean we don't turn around and address that in fifth grade.
Right.
Um, what we were saying is sometimes in the high school, it gets a little bit harder because they're not in the same classes. So, um, trying to capture everyone, like, oh, we need to reteach this one unit. Well, they're scattered amongst all these different math courses. So it's catching them earlier, that's the formative part of it, um, really helps us to fill in those spaces. iReady will also help us with that. Um, and our teachers are amazing in terms of how they work to address, um, what they see in the classroom. They lean on their colleagues, sometimes they share amongst their, you know, fourth grade goes for tour and some students go here and some go here to get the different skills they need. So that just adds to that toolbox that we have.
So, um, slide number says twenty-three.
Tell me what's at the top, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
It's the question, how does the data change from year to year based on cohort of students?
Okay.
Which is basically what I think you were.
ELA or math?
ELA is the one I'm on.
All right.
Thank you.
A side note, before, uh, trustee Van Gemmer said this right out of the gate. In future presentations, if we could have the slides numbered, that would.
Oh, I already made that mention.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't know why, that's why.
Yeah.
It's something.
And I only know it's twenty-three because it's the twenty-three on the, um, page here, so.
That's the one. Is that one, the one you're opening at?
That is, that is the correct.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so I'm looking, um, at, and I think you asked, I, I can't remember if I asked this question in the committee meeting or not, but for the M-step for fourth grade class of twenty-five, is that how that reads, the very first one?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm looking at their, their, their score in comparison to the cohorts. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, oh, twenty-eight. So these are the students who are graduating that, well, some of them because they're not all, right?
These are current seniors.
Current seniors, right? So I'm looking at the progression, and I don't know if, if this is just like a kudos to like, I don't know what has changed.
Envisioned math.
Right, so, um, I just wanted to go back and highlight the twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-seven students. There's a lot of promise there. Is there, was there something that changed, I can't remember in that year?
Not in that year, that those, the longer, so the students that are graduating twenty twenty-nine had envisioned math for almost their entirety of, if not their entirety of elementary school. This year's current seniors had it maybe for fourth and fifth grade. So you can see there is your fourth grade year was that low blue and then shot to purple. And then sixth grade would have been that light green year, if I have that right, yeah.
Similar, well, it's true for, for math, but these are ELA.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, same.
There you go.
Other color.
Yeah, so that, you'll see that jump up. Um, and in fact, if you look at the twenty twenty-five year, again, that, this is the year, um, current seniors, twenty-five percent of them were in Algebra I and eighth grade. They went from Everyday Math to Envisioned Math, and they also experienced the change over to Big Ideas. So they hit some math changes along the way in terms of their, um, tenure with us versus twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Those graduating class years had Envisioned Math, Big Ideas, you know, a much, a much more coherent year and a little bit less change in terms of their curriculum.
I think where the graph cuts off makes it look more dramatic also.
Yeah.
Yeah, like because you're, you're looking, you're saying, oh, this.
It looks weird, right?
Fourth grade looks so low, but.
But even going back to the ELA one, if you go.
I don't know if I just buttoned this.
Yeah.
Um, I don't either.
Year to year.
Oh.
So like you said, so. I want to go back and more to the ELA. So even looking at that cohort of twenty twenty-five again, it looks like they dropped from PSAT to SAT. But if you remember, that's the highest score in the entire county for SAT. So because the tests changed too, you can't always just compare the scores, if that makes sense. And I can't speak to, to years that it's happened, but if you were asking that, back to that blue, my guess is that, um, and I know that Bloomfield has continued to add additional supports for ELA, um, in, in addition to the core, like chronic supports and things like that. And I would think that that has probably also impacted that ELA score over time. I just can't speak to the years as I wasn't here when they have all been implemented, but.
Will this be something that you'll show, I mean, as I know sometimes like we get different charts, but will this be something that we'll continue?
We'll continue to, to dig at, I think that's the.
But, yeah, and, and my intent when I made these slides was I, I kind of looked at what you'd seen in the past, but I needed to make them mine. So I intend unless you want to see something different, like I've already made a note, next year, not the numbers for my access, the percentages. Um, but I intend to show you the same things year after year so that, you know, it's not a, a whole new presentation every year. So that, you know, unless there's something missing or something that you're not interested in, you'll see the same sort of things this time next year.
Having the consistency matter, so I think, um, so thank you, but I just, you answered my question.
Can you go to the, um, SAT scores?
That we showed early, like, um, am I on the right one, this one? Or the actual score page?
The score page.
Tell anyone.
I don't know. The, what does it say on the top?
Or percentage of local school students met proficiency expectations.
You want to just say?
I'm looking for the proficiency expectations, must be earlier.
That was this one, but that was M-step.
Oh, yes.
Is this the right one?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just ELA and PSAT.
Is, is met proficiency the same as college ready?
So, yes, um, the, for PSAT, not for SAT, they will release them in four levels that align with the M-step. So there's, so yes, the top two levels would be considered on track to be college-ready. Where SAT is a little different because it is college-ready, it's no longer on track. But that's why SAT is not, and this one, just PSAT. So yes, that they look at the two top levels of both as the same.
Okay. So basically in eighth grade, we're saying seventy percent of our students are on track to be college-ready by the time they take the SAT.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know, someone might need to talk to the PSAT people. It feels like it's supposed to be correlative, but they, they've been a little off for a while.
Yes, yes. And that's not unique to here, I mean, that's everywhere. And that, and this year's scores are also brand new, you know, it's a brand new assessment. So it'll be interesting to see how the PSAT actually correlates to the SAT when this year's eighth graders get to eleventh grade.
Yeah, because what will happen is last year's, so, um, last year's PSAT or ninth grader scores were on the old test.
No, they were, they were.
Were they adaptive?
They, so that last year's, yes, so this current ninth grade took the new test and that'll be the first. So we have the two new tests to really compare them to.
So I meant tenth grade took the old test, but they'll be having to take the new adaptive test. So like, will those even correlate at all?
And I have asked college board for some sort of correlation. Like when they change M-step, they try to release some sort of, this really means that on the new test. Uh, college board is not even attempting that.
Like just the student's work.
Yes.
Okay.
And if you look on one of the charts towards the back, there's a large purple box on the side and it will tell you like all of the, the changes and like which years didn't test, when did we start with the S? Cause the PSAT was new in eighteen nineteen, so some of the kids would have taken M-step and not PSAT in eighth grade. That was new right before COVID.
And then.
Then, then there was a year where testing was optional, so although we have scores, we don't know that how many kids came in to take, it is not an accurate reflection of all of our students, so.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, you, you wrote on, uh, the slide number twenty, that state assessments are not designed to be diagnostic or drive day-to-day teaching and learning.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just curious, I would like your opinion, comparing our scores to other districts around the area. What, what, uh, kind of assessment or opinion do you have about how we're doing based on these scores then? And what, what are you gathering comparing the scores? I'm just curious what your take is.
So when you like, so the slide up here is the example of us comparing ourselves to the top five districts in Oakland County, or traditionally the top five, so we took a five-year average. So this is all of our ELA and M-stop, so grades three through eight. We are the lovely little dotted line that you see there. And so over the five years, our scores are now averaging above the other five, if that makes sense. So what we're feeling is, and of course seventy, seventy percent to seventy-two point three percent is not a massive difference, but it is showing an upward trend, um, as this accounts for all the fluctuations in the state testing as well, since we're all experiencing it. Um, so what we feel is that we are doing really well, we are extremely competitive. Um, we have other districts, as Todd is not here to talk about how he wants to win.
Correct.
So, but he, you know, we are competitive within these range, like this one here, again, it's the, the graph.
Yeah.
Um, seventy-seven point nine percent between seventy-six point two percent. That is less than a two percent difference between us and the other top five. So I think as a county, first of all, I'm proud of educators in the county of Oakland. Um, I think that they have done an excellent job as a county. And then to be able to say that we are in the top five and doing as well as, if not better than them, um, I think puts us in a really strong place. Does that mean that we have room for improvement? Of course it does. Um, but I think it allows us, um, it allows us the space and the ability to really drill down to almost specific, what does this student right here need? Versus saying a more comprehensive, we need to revamp our entire everything. Um, so I think that that is the luxury of having scores like this, is it does afford us the opportunity to really drill down to a specific needs of every single student versus worrying about whether or not we have the right program in place.
Yeah, I, I think that that, that line in that assess, the state assessments are not designed to be diagnostic or drive day-to-day teaching and learning. And I think that the state assessments, first of all, we're in a place where we don't need to always worry about tier one, which is what it says, like our core instruction is good and strong. So it gives us the ability to look at the individual needs for tier two and tier three. It also gives us the ability to, to stop and have conversations about what we're seeing around the county. Who's going up? Why are they going up? What are they doing? You know, so those are the conversations that we've been having in teaching and learning. Um, so I feel like even though we're in a good place, even when we're, you know, for the SAT, we're all the way to the left, the, the top for both. Well, great, but what are the people that have the most growth doing differently? How can we borrow, learn from them? Todd would say steal, but how can we learn from them and, and make changes? So I, I think it, like, we're in a great place, but I think it still allows us, it actually allows us to have better and deeper conversations instead of worrying about the core foundation. We get to, to figure out what others are doing, what little changes we can make and how do we meet those individual student needs.
And for the layperson, what does tier two, two and three?
So tier one's your core instruction, and then tier two and tier three are this additional support students get. The higher the number, the more intensive the support.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got that correct.
So essentially pull out, para coming in, working with a small group, all that, that's tier, tier, tier two and tier three. Tier one is done by the teacher themselves.
Oh, yeah.
So we, we have one slide to, we, we have one slide in my fall update. And how I'm summarizing this is in aggregate, it would be very easy for us to rest on our laurels and say, look at us, we're, we're at the top. When we disaggregate the data, what they're saying is we see opportunities for improvement and it affords us the opportunity to dig deeper and, uh, figure out exactly what, what our struggling learners are needing to improve scores for all. And, uh, so that's what, it, what I've been very impressed with in my time here thus far is, is one, the competitiveness of wanting to really achieve and figure out what practices and processes we can put in place in order to do so. Uh, and then the, the LST team collaborating, looking at this information, disaggregating it. You have forty-six slides here that disaggregates it and cuts up this data.
We have a lot more.
It cuts this data up in, in several ways for us to really dig in and, and find out where our problem areas are, our areas of opportunity are. And, uh, and we're doing that.
Sorry, you somewhat was connecting what I, my question was, uh, or is. And what are, what are the, some of the things that you've found that we may need in our district that we are not necessarily doing?
I don't think we have the answers yet. I think we're still asking lots of questions and then those questions will lead us down a path to dig in more, if that makes sense. Like, we don't have any answers, we just have a lot of questions.
So, but there are, so from what I'm hearing, you say the best practices that you're identifying from other organizations or other institutions, not institutions. You know what I mean?
But, yeah, school system, school system, yeah.
So you're, you're looking at those best practices. Are you looking at state or are you looking at best practices nationally?
Or, I mean, we're looking at best practices of education. I think one of the things that we're really careful about is, um, we want to make sure that we are working within a sustainable model. So the idea of iReady is an example, I, we have talked about, it's not, it's not the perfect panacea for everything. I am excited about it, but it also does allow us the opportunity to say, address some very specific student needs on an individual basis. The program can do that for us and really help us in that space. So that was one of the practices that we saw other districts that were successful around the country do. We investigated it, we looked at it, we determined that it was much more successful than, um, fast bridge in terms of giving us that drilled-down data to a specific student, to a specific lesson that they need. Versus just saying the student is, is or is not achieving a grade level. Um, which is kind of where we get a little bit of the, um, fast bridge reading and writing tells us if the student's on target or not, but not specifically to the point of how we can support them in that space. So that's one example where we brought in iReady for that exact purpose. Um, other places that we are looking at is, um, I think that our teachers do a phenomenal job and I think giving them the space to do their job instead of saying that, that pendulum swing of, well, you have three students here who are really struggling, so therefore we're going to change everything on you, but instead go in there and give them the support for just those three students. So being much more targeted in our support system for both teachers and students in terms of instructional practices in those places. So I think our core curriculum, we're very fond of and proud of our core curriculum, especially in ELA and math, um, but making sure that we can, um, help our teachers in that depth of knowledge of how the program can help them identify ways to support those students in their instructional practices, that we don't need to do a whole-scale piece. iReady is, I think, the piece that we thought we really were missing in terms of a true diagnostic, in terms of what is happening, so we can find and support our students sooner.
So we're, but we're, we're paying, we're, iReady right now is from, correct me, I could be wrong. I'm trying to remember all the committees. Is grant-funded correct right now?
This year, yes.
This year, yes.
So, but are we, if this ends up being something that we are finding is definitely supporting our students, have we thought about what happens at the end of the cycle? Um, how do we sustain these supports for our students to continue to, for the outward movement toward, closer toward that seven percent?
So it is entirely grant-funded this year with a, a grant that will be expiring in September. However, the state of Michigan has a benchmark assessment reimbursement grant that very few assessments qualify for, that being one of them. So it will supplement a portion of each student's assessment and the district is currently paying. And the district is currently paying for fast bridge and that would be ending. So there's some funds there that could transition. We don't have a quote for next year, but the intent is to align a number of different funding sources to make sure that that assessment gets to continue.
So it's cost neutral as we can make it.
And I think we would prioritize it regardless, I really do. I think it, I think it will prove to be a tool that is effective to evaluate practice and performance and allow us to make, allow our practitioners to make instructional changes throughout the year. And many schools have these type of tools, iReady being one of one of several. So I would think as we go through our annual budget and we look at our priorities, I would think some sort of assessment tool would be would be top of list.
And I and I know that you all will, if there are grants available, because you've been doing a great job at applying for those, so we do appreciate that and all of the magic that happens to make sure funding is supported. So so thank you for that. I have no more questions.
Is there commentary? All right, thank you for your presentation.
I have lots of commentary, but I don't think you will be talking.
Does anyone else have any specific questions? Moving on to agenda item ten B, quarterly bond report from Flint, Marion, Real Point. This will be presented by Alan Dresselhaus and David Goldman.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us. We've got nothing but good things to tell you tonight. We just want to give you a couple of moments to get kind of a year end wrap up presentation here, show you what we've completed, what we're working on and where we're going. Mr. Goldman here will talk a little bit about some of the financials and walk you through a few of the project highlights. I also want to thank the Bloomfield Hills Bond Team, Keith, Jake, David and Samer. The four, five of us meet regularly, a couple of times a week, go through the challenges at hand and they make quick decisions and help us and enable us to keep things moving. And a lot of bond programs out there right now are tracking way over budget, behind schedule. I'm happy to report we're tracking at budget and maybe a little bit ahead of schedule. So with that, hopefully you've had an opportunity to drive by the high school lately. You can see the new wellness center is going vertical. We're hoping to be enclosed here by December, which will enable us to do our interior finishes. We are tracking several months of ahead of schedule. Originally that was planned for a fall, August, September opening. I think we will be able to beat that by several months, so that's real good news. We are also now getting ready to start on our gateway, the new athletic entrance and teams building with restrooms and hoping to break ground here over the next thirty days and have that ready for start of new school year next year. Concurrently, as Rick alluded to, Fox Hills is about ready to come down. So demolition plans are in place, utilities are disconnected. We're just waiting on DT to cooperate cooperate with us a little bit here and then we'll be able to move forward with that. The International Academy Secure Vestibule is going to be starting construction here. And then the elementary schools, the final phase, which is primarily cosmetic, painting, carpet, wall finishes, things of that nature is going to be taking, starting work here in the summer of twenty five. So again, you know, those things are all tracking basically on time or a little bit ahead of time, which is good. We are going to be coming to you soon here with the Bloomfield West and Robotics Center. We're getting the bid packages in here in the next couple of weeks. So we'll be coming to the board with the numbers on that. Bowers Farm Nature Center, Wing Lake renovations are all being discussed. We're putting schematic drawings together, understanding what we can financially achieve and what we cannot. So the team's working diligently on that. Transportation renovations and additions for the the new bus garage. We actually met on that today, so those things are starting to come together, put some numbers together to make sure we have adherence to our budget there. And then finally, some renovations here at Booth and at the high school. We are tracking to do that work starting late twenty five into twenty six. So all in all, we are on track, if not a little ahead of schedule and looking to complete this bond program in twenty six. It's hard to believe it's four years in right now and hopefully you're getting good feedback from the community because things certainly look really nice out there. So with that, I'll let David walk you through a little bit of high level of financials, some project highlights, and then we'll get out of your way.
Thank you, Alan. So this is a more condensed version of previous budgets. This has been made available to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. I believe we've reviewed it with them. This is also the document that gets posted to the website for the public viewing. So as you'll see, there is a new budget that you're probably not used to seeing. Normally, originally, we started off with two oh one one fifty five as our budget. I do want to note that the budget you are seeing here right now includes all of our interest earnings through July two thousand twenty four. So that that's why the increase is projected on on the on the left hand side. The the projected commitments are as follow, you know, in that column next to it, which is basically what we're planning on spending in each of those categories. You could call it like the new the new budget. The actuals approved column are everything paid against the commitments. Cost to complete is in that column, it's just the balance of the projected commitments minus the actuals approved. And then the forecasted commitments column is kind of what we have left to spend going forward, stuff that hasn't been approved by you guys yet. So and then obviously you have the estimate estimation at completion and the over under. As Alan kind of mentioned, right now we are tracking under budget by two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Obviously, it's a moving target, you know, as as projects come in, get approved, come under budget. We just had some good discussions with our Bart Malo team this morning in regards to that elementary phase three work. It's looking pretty favorable in our favor. So it's kind of on the right hand side, the pie chart is kind of how the bond funding is broken down across the whole bond program. You can see the majority of it is construction with professional fees, technology and furniture and equipment included in there as well. I guess I could open it up to questions at the end if that works for you guys. The project schedule, as Alan alluded to, we are making some great progress through the bond. Everything is tracking to be on schedule in green as we speak. We are coming to you guys next month with two bid packages. Again, that's going to include the elementary school phase three work over the summer, the IA and Wing Lake Secure Vestibules, and then, as Alan said as well, the Blumen West and Robotics renovations over there. On the right, you will see kind of all those projects just listed out and what we have coming. And then I wanted to just share with you guys. So over the summer, we were working in a lot of the schools. We were doing a lot of the overhead work in all the elementary schools, so stuff that you wouldn't see as you walk in. They all, all the new elementary schools got new FFNE throughout. You can see some new office furniture, some new classroom furniture. We did a lot of lighting upgrades, a lot of ceiling upgrades. So you can see by these pictures, it was it was a lot to do in the in the summer, but we were very successful and turned them over right on time for the school to be open. And then as Alan mentioned, these are kind of our projects that are in progress, whether it be, you know, it's actually been approved by you guys, I should say. And they are all under construction or very close to construction. The restroom building on the top left, our new athletic gateway with the Black Hawk sculpture overlooking it. And then these pictures of the wellness center are actually probably outdated at this point in time. That's how fast they're they're moving, but it's progressing really well. These were taken last week and they've already made progress since they were taken. So that's what we have to share with you guys.
I just have an aesthetics question. Do we need a Black Hawk over a Black Hawk? I'm just trying to understand.
We're still, we're still finalizing the actual building sign as it would. I think it's just going to say Bloomfield Hills and then obviously the Black Hawk text will still be there. So that's still in.
But that hawk, that's just.
You're talking about that bird?
That bird.
Yeah, it's a sculpture and it's approximately about six feet wide, about four feet tall.
Did you say it's six feet by four feet?
Yeah, with the wing spread.
Why do we need that? Like what is the purpose of this? I know, I'm just saying, that could be a textbook. I mean, like, why are we buying this bird?
It's a seventeen thousand dollar sculpture.
It was also part of the major, a lot of the student input that we received.
Oh, the students wanted a Black Hawk on top of the Black Hawk?
And and the vibe that they wanted to create to walk into the arena.
Yeah, Michelle, the the Black Hawk that says Bloomfield Hills, you can't read it very well. That's actually on the facade of the ticket booth. That is just signage. We're not sure exactly what that'll look like yet. It may have something to do with the crest or just may say Bloomfield Hills on it.
Seventeen thousand dollars just seems like a lot of money for a Black Hawk on top of a Black Hawk.
Again, that black, you're only going to have one of the Blackhawks there.
Oh, okay. So the one that's just the bird, that's the.
Just the head of the bird on the front. That is just a rendering. We haven't, we haven't worked with a sign company to identify what that is, but it's not internally illuminated. It's more of like a die cast metal that would be adhered to the front of the brick. But as Keith alluded to, we met with the students, the athletic administration to come up with this design. And we have presented this to the board a few times.
I know, and I always, and I always ask about the bird, just being very consistent about the Black Hawk. That's.
I think that's fair. It's kind of ugly, to be honest with you. I mean, I'll say it.
One of our students designed that.
Oh, well, I'm not running again, I suppose.
I'll say this, if there's, I mean, we can always.
That's the only thing.
This is not done. If we need to talk and discuss, we could, but.
We'll take this back to Finance and Operations. I can tell you a lot of conversation.
This is just a rendering, right?
Well, it's a rendering, but a lot of conversations have gone into that.
Is that the actual sculpture?
I gave up on all the other stuff that I was.
That one on top of the brick?
Yeah, I gave up on everything else.
Those two are just renderings. We haven't, we haven't even started construction yet. So we came to the board, I believe, two months ago.
Oh, yeah, you definitely did. I saw that before.
And I had the same question.
It was approved then.
That is correct.
The entire project was approved. That included an allowance or.
That is correct.
Included that, so.
Doesn't mean that we can't take that bird off.
Sculptor to come up with what's called shop drawings, of which we obviously, you know, review internally to finalize, to make sure that it's structurally sound. And but again, I don't want to de-emphasize the fact that the decisions on this was made with the athletic department, the students in mind and the bond team and and our architect.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we're paying seventeen thousand dollars just for a sculpture. It's a lot of money, but we agree to it.
I mean, we could look at that with everything. We could say like, do you want to pay for turf? You, I mean, I don't know where, I'm not saying you're wrong, but I think.
With all of the extra things that we've had to cut out, I don't know, I just. But if the students want it, we're going to have, we already voted on it. We're going to keep moving forward. With with this sculpture, I'm just making sure you know that I.
Again, Michelle, I think we'll work with our our bond team once we get the shop drawings to make sure it's the right image. Yep.
About four feet is also pretty, pretty.
It's a big bird.
It's not small.
Well, it's a focal point for the entrance, so.
I hope it looks like a Black Hawk and not what I see.
All right, so open it up to.
And the big bird conversation.
Right, right. Open it up to questions where we're at.
I liked the gateway altogether.
You haven't liked the gateway at all.
I just have to be honest, the whole gateway, I've just, I think I've expressed my opinions about the brick. It's, it looks very interesting.
We're doing our best to match the actual brick on the high school. Again, these are renderings, they're interpretations of of what's there. So when it comes time to selecting the brick, we'll have several samples we'll be matching up, very similar to like what we did at North when we were going through that exercise. I know that looks very kind of patchy, but.
This whole thing is interesting as it is. Now, how wide is this going to be? I'm guessing it's.
How wide is the ticket booth or how wide is the entrance?
This pillar.
The pillar, I don't have the exact dimensions, but if I had to take a guess, it's probably twelve feet wide by maybe ten feet deep.
Put that out there, this is, this is ginormous. I'm looking forward to seeing the ribbon cutting.
Any other questions the board may have for us?
Just wanted to say thank you for doing all this work and keeping it on time. That's a big job and I know everyone's very appreciative of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially on time, that's and ahead of time, ahead of schedule.
We're doing our best, so. Thank you, Board. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving and we'll see you again soon.
Are we, do we have any more questions?
Got to give you a hard time about one thing at least.
Does anyone have any more questions?
I don't. No.
No? Okay. All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to agenda item eleven, Board Business. Section A, request to approve Big Pat Bid PAC eight point three change order at the High School Wellness Center, CCD eight Township Stormwater Conveyance Requirements. This information will be presented by Keith McDonald and Jake McDermott. If you could give us a brief overview. We will make the motion and then we will ask for discussion at that time before we vote. So go ahead, Card.
I move the Board of Education to approve a construction change order Bid PAC eight point three in the amount of ninety nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents issued to Dalko Services for stormwater conveyance and construction work at the High School's Wellness Center as required by Bloomfield Township and as presented.
All right, any discussion on this topic? Wait.
Second, somebody needs a second.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded. Any discussion on this topic?
So it's not optional, we have to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's been a similar theme to all of our projects is we get approval and then we get into it and then we get told we need some additional things that we have to do.
And the township came a little bit late on the drawings on this, so we already went, we already got our bids.
Right.
And so this came after the fact. So at that point, with that and the the water main options, it was to lump it together and and take that around.
Can you remind me the dollar amount threshold for board approval?
Hundred thousand. So which was another part of why we brought this in, because it was right there. So we wanted to make sure we were transparent with that.
Okay.
And we're doing this as a separate ask outside of the contingency.
Right, okay, all right. Yes, we, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion on the, from the board on this? Ready to favor, ready to favor? Are we ready to vote?
Aye.
This is like a skin. All those in favor? Any opposed? No, motion passes five zero. Thank you. Moving on to B, you can stay here, Mr. McDonald. This is the request to approve RFP ten forty eight asbestos abatement at Fox Hills. Do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve a change order to RFP ten forty eight in the amount of nine thousand one hundred eighty seven dollars and fifty cents for additional asbestos abatement services of Fox Hills as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? No, motion passes five zero. Thank you. Moving on to C, request to approve First Amendment to Cooperative Agreement between Bloomfield Schools and Charter Township of West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission, Pine Lake Park. This will be presented by Rick West, our superintendent. Do we want to have, do you want a discussion first or do you want us to make the motion and then go through discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the First Amendment to the Cooperative Agreement between Bloomfield Schools and the Charter Township of West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, so let me just explain, at the last committee of the whole, the West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission was there represented by their director. Parks and Recreation Commission was there, represented by their director, and they presented a multi-phase approach to improve and enhance the Pine Lake Park. And so we also discussed the desire, if they are going to invest the time and money into those improvements and enhancements, that they would, they would like us to explore an additional 10 years. I think I misspoke in the committee of the whole this earlier and said five years. They're looking for a 10-year enhancement. So from, the current agreement extends to 2043. The First Amendment simply takes that and extends it to 2053. So that is, that's at their request. Through conversations with Finance and Operations Committee, we, we thought this was an adequate request, given, given the investment that they're looking to make and the partnership that we're looking to have with them to add the additional 10 years.
This was also reminding us that the construction point, so they can actually have some time with the post-construction to be able to have the community use the resources. That's why the 10-year is being requested.
That's correct, yeah. Their multi-phase approach goes out several, several years, so that, that was part of their calculus as it relates to extending the agreement.
Looking forward to.
I don't, I don't have it up on my computer, it restarted, so I'm waiting to get back on, but.
I have it right here.
Okay, there was, there were a few provisions in there that we had to.
You're looking at the amendment?
Not at the amendment, at the original contract. So there were a few provisions in there which had to be met. I'm just like, maybe, I do know they talked about a few of them in there, as I went through, okay.
No other provisions other than the term is modified by this.
Yes, no, I wanted to go back to just the original, just so that I'm clear, so. Within, like, it talks about 18 months of when that contract is executed, to have the signage, which checked the box, they did that, portages or bathrooms, I'm sure they did that. They talked about the repairs of the parking lot, but I forget about the tennis courts and the baseball field. And there was discussions about like grading for the fields. I don't remember if, I just wanted to, you know, as we're going into this, like, those things that have to be met, reflect on that and make sure all that stuff's done.
Yeah, that is the intention of their, their required annual update. Is it an annual update?
It says within 18 months that those things are executed on.
I don't think it was 18 months. I think that the tennis courts and the baseball fields, I think the baseball fields were, but the tennis courts, I think, were in another phase, if I'm not mistaken, in a new contract.
Well, in the contract, 3B, commission's obligations, it is within 18 months, update the tennis courts and the baseball field on the property.
And I recall in the conversation we had with them previously, there was something about not being able to do something, but when I saw this, I just wanted to make sure it's going to get done in 18 months, number one, which is something we can check back on, and that's fine.
Which would be six months from now?
Yeah, exactly.
When did you approve this?
It's, that was.
It's almost like it would be nice to see a further addition, an addendum.
Yeah.
Covering what they presented to us last time with the phasing of what their intentions are, so.
So an addendum that includes 3B, or alterations to 3B?
The phases that they gave us last time at the last meeting that we were at. But to your point, yes, it does not appear right now that they would be on track to have that done within six months, which would, so I think we need that reflected somehow and somehow rectified, like an explanation as to why and what the intention is.
Yeah.
To correct that before we enter into this extension. I don't have any issue with the extension personally, but I do want to make sure that we're keeping this on track.
And I don't recall the conversation last month if they addressed that. They addressed their phased approach.
Yeah, I do know that.
But there are.
But I don't, I don't recall that being, let me follow up with them if we're not, there's no time crunch here, but I will, we can table this?
Yeah.
And then bring it back.
Actually, I just want to make sure we're getting through everything before we say, yeah, let's amend this and add on another.
Or we could, it's up to you. We could table it, or we could accept this because it's very specific to the terms, but if you want to roll that into a full addendum.
I'd rather one addendum.
Gotcha, okay.
Personally, I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
I think what you're saying is, let's make sure that.
Everything is changed.
They're following what we agreed to before, before we agreed to extend.
Unless anybody, I don't know.
Because I feel like the extension is giving them more time, and I understand that they have the hurdles that they've been up against, and we certainly want to be good partners and understand that, but before we give extensions, which I think is just motivation to take the foot off the gas, I want to hear what the intentions are, what the plan is to, to stay in compliance with the original contract.
Yeah, otherwise, I'm okay. I mean, the original contract still, you know, we're still in a good position with the rest of it in terms of whatever we would want to do, you know, they have right of first refusal and things like that, so it's not like I feel like anything else is, I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I feel like it's a good partnership, I feel like I do appreciate the plan that they presented, all of that, but when I saw that, I was like, I don't remember if we met all those conditions and where the clock is winding down, so I'd feel better if we knew.
Yeah, we're like a month out technically from when it was signed off on by them, so I would say instead of amending a contract that they, they already breached, let's just extend those time frames also.
Or, yeah.
I don't have the contract in front of me. The field did get worked on because they brought dirt in and they leveled it out. I don't know what extent the contract says they're going to do to the field.
Well, it does appear to be vague.
So that's what I'm worried about because we use that field, you know, Sting Baseball used it all summer, so improvements were done on that field. And then as for the tennis courts?
Yeah.
Yeah, update is vague.
Those courts are so far past their life. The only update they could do is do a complete restore, and that's pretty much what their plan had. They could crack, you know, they could crack seal it, but it still would be a major issue. I mean, there were some large cracks in there, so I don't know, you know, based on the plan that they gave us, it's, you know, redoing, redoing everything at the same time, that might be part of it, because, I mean, based on the vague language, they could just put a crack sealer in there and say, we kind of up.
Well, then, I just, I think that they're operating in good faith, right? I think we all agree with that, right? So let's just tighten up some of this language so that it doesn't become an issue and it doesn't get delayed, and we don't have the community upset that with eight, within 18 months, you know, this was supposed to happen, now we're all debating, are they in violation of the contract? What's a reasonable person standard of what update means? Like, oh, we don't, we don't go there.
That's fair.
So how about, I just think there's an opportunity to, you know, and you indicated that the, so the specific baseball field obligation was repair and grade. So you're indicating you think that's been done?
It was graded, you know, because they brought in, you know, dirt was brought in, and it was graded, so as for repair, I don't know what repairs were needed.
So it's almost like the amendment, the First Amendment, having an appendix which would outline the status of the obligation so far up against what has occurred, as well as what's outstanding, and the new, more realistic timelines, if they're not in compliance with what those would be.
Just reviewing the presentation that they provided, one, they did not highlight the grading of the ball field as completed work, so I don't know what their assumption would be, but it is clear in their phased approach and in their 25 phasing plan that removing the tennis courts as part of 2025 does not say replacement, so that would be, that would be different than 3B.
Okay.
And then their new ball field is in Phase III, new tennis courts are in Phase IV, so that would not align with, I think, our expectations of 3B, so we need to just figure that out.
Yeah.
So I will go back to them and have that conversation and tell them that we need a more comprehensive addendum.
Just sort of lining up with where we are against the obligations, if it doesn't appear that we'll be timely with them, what the new expected timelines are, and then the extension for 10 years.
Yep.
Or even if they have to change the multi, like, if there's.
It appears they've come up with a whole different plan.
If the tennis courts are not going to be able to be redone, then we just can eliminate that, and I think that since no one's paying anyone anything here, we're, you know, I think we can.
And typically, we would have Sting Baseball, they're the ones that bring the dirt in, and they do their own grading, so that's where it's, that gray area where, not necessarily West Bloomfield Parks did it, but it got done through the program that is using the field.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up to clarify that. All right, so we do have a motion on the table, so I do think we need to vote. We can just table that for, what do you think is realistic? Let's call it, we'll table this till January.
I mean, and let them know, like, I only bring this, I mean, I dedicated, I appreciate it, and I don't, I'm not trying to hold it up, but when I saw that, I was like, well, wait a second.
No, we're just, we're just doing some nice, neat housekeeping.
I will, I'll have conversations tomorrow, and we might be able to get this done in December. Depends on the quick turnaround, but.
We'll pull it forward.
No later than January.
Okay, so that's been tabled, that was the last item on the agenda. Does anyone have any other items that they would like to bring up before we adjourn? No, all settled, then we are adjourned. Thank you.